June twenty second, for the sake of everyone's time as we try to squeeze this many department heads as possible into this meeting, we'll go ahead and get started and we'll continue to let people in as the presentation is going. So I will defer to Mr. Brown, and then I guess we'll turn it over to you TJ, and then I'll go in the order of the sheet that I have on my paper. For counselors, just quickly, so you can have an idea as to what is going to occur. Today, we are meeting from five o'clock to six fifteen. We will hear as many budget presentations as possible. My hope is that, you know, we can ask our questions as briefly as possible and our responses from the department heads could be as succinct as possible. But I just want to highlight that this is not the only opportunity in forum in which counselors can ask questions leading up to our actual vote on the budget, which will occur on six twenty nine. So, just a quick rundown, six twenty two, we'll be here from five o'clock to six fifteen. Then we will log out to a separate link to, to our public speak out, which will occur from six fifteen to six thirty. And then we will log back on to the link that we are on now, and we will conduct our regular city council meeting. Tomorrow, we will have budget hearings. They will start at five o'clock, and they will go until we finish. And then six twenty nine, from five o'clock to five thirty, will be a public speak out on the budget. And on six twenty nine, from five thirty to six thirty, we will try to attempt to vote on the actual budget itself. As you all know, we have a hearings meeting that will take place at six thirty. So if we don't get to voting on the budget by six thirty, then we will, then we'll shoot for the next day, which will be on, I'm sorry, what did I say? So that was six twenty nine, so six thirty, five thirty until. And then if we don't get it done on six thirty, then we will reconvene on seven one at five o'clock. So, let's get started. Mr. Brown. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more housekeeping. If anybody has questions from the council, bear with me, but I will go in order that I see your hands raised. Go for it.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes. All right, great. So yeah, this is just gonna be a quick overview of kind of high level changes in the budget for this year, and obviously the effect that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on the budget. So, starting off, we're gonna talk about kind of the budget challenges that Springfield has had from before the pandemic, our kind of structural deficit, and those challenges. Then we're gonna talk about how COVID-19 affected budget process this year, and how it's kind of affected our strategy towards balancing. And then, going into the budget, we'll talk about the main drivers of growth, as well as the major investments we're still able to put into this budget despite the revenue, you know, cuts that we had to assume that we were gonna take over this next year. So, it's kind of my tale of two cities. There's been a lot of good news coming out about Springfield. We've a lot talked about the Springfield Renaissance, story in Governing Magazine about, you know, all the financial success the city's had. Obviously, the MGM Casino Resort is now open, and that's brought in additional revenues for the city. We've had other follow-on growth in downtown and across the city. And that kind of shows up in the new growth we've had in the levy each year, which has helped us collect more revenue each year. But the problem is that we still have the structural deficit where our expenses are growing faster than our revenues. So, what's growing is our non-discretionary costs. These are obligations that we have to pay, which is what makes the budget so challenging each year. So with revenues, growth there is limited. We have the constraints of proposition two and a half, which only allows for that new growth to be taxed, and an increase of two and a half percent a year on the prior year's levy. And then we have unrestricted general government aid that comes from the state, as I'll show you in a bit. That has not been increasing much quicker than that two and a half percent a year. On the expense side, we have pension, that's the largest one, that's increasing nine percent a year, obviously much faster than our revenue sources are increasing. We also have net school spending and school transportation. That's also increasing more than two and a half percent a year, so that's putting pressure on the budget. And then debt service, we'll get into, because of the way we set up the debt schedule, that's declining this year, but with the four elementary schools that we're building, that's something that's gonna go up in future years. So, this is just an image of our property tax levy, adjusted for inflation. You can see that even twelve years later, we still have not reached the same amount of value that we used to be able to tax. So, the peak of the decline was the start of the Great Recession from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen. The levy lost over a fifth of its value. This obviously had major impacts on the city and program cuts. It led to a twenty-three percent, almost one in four, reduction of full-time employee equivalents on the city side of the budget. You can see that in this chart. So, in recent years, we've been able to, you know, bring back a lot of these investments, and it seems like we've been growing our staff quite a bit. But one of the things we thought was important to highlight is that we're also just getting back to where we were at the beginning of the last recession, and now we're looking at another significant recession. So, three years later, with, when you adjust for inflation, our levy is still eight percent lower than it was in two thousand eight. Unrestricted general government aid, this is what we can use to fund city services. That took a very big hit, as you can see, in two thousand nine with the Great Recession. And they've been doing kind of a revenue sharing formula where they increase that aid by about the amount that they think revenues will increase each year. But as you can see, once you account for inflation, it basically has been pretty level for about the past decade. So it hasn't helped us so much with keeping up with those really large increases and things like pension. Then the other question would be, what about our other sources of revenue? So you can see here, the effects of MGM, starting in the last few years of this chart, we've been taking in more money from these other sources, but it's still part of a source of revenue compared to the property tax levies. So it's not solving all our problems on the structural deficit front. And then, a graph of our pension contributions. This just shows that nine percent a year, how cumulatively, it's gonna put a lot of stress on the budget, and where we've been feeling it the last few years, and we're gonna keep on feeling it even as we also have to deal with the effects of COVID-19. The other expenses I talked about, so the Promise Act, it was very exciting. It's gonna bring a lot more funding into the Springfield schools. But one of the side effects of that is the best numbers that we've gotten, which have come from the governor's office, showed an average increase in our local contribution over the next seven years of around three point two percent. So again, that's gonna be a bit higher than we can raise taxes each year, so it's gonna put more stress on the budget. That's a non-discretionary cost. Then our debt service, like I mentioned, is declining, but once we have Homer DeBarry and Brightwood Lincoln fully constructed, and we sell the bonds for that, that's a number that's gonna go back up again. So, I'm gonna go through the budget-making process and how it normally goes, and then we'll get into how COVID-19 changed our thought process and shaped the budget this year. So normally, December, January, that's when our office, Office of Management and Budget, is preparing department workbooks, creating rosters for departments, and we send those out for them to make their budget requests. We release this multi-year financial plan each year, which is our best guess estimate of how much departments will grow, and how revenues will grow. So when we ran those numbers, we were looking at a fourteen point seven million dollar gap. That's a bit smaller than it's been in previous years. We were doing good revenue-wise, so this was gonna be a year, you know, that might have been good for some investments, and it was gonna be easier to solve, though we still had the problems with that structural deficit. Then in January, we also have a debt study that's released, that plans out our debt service for the next year. And then in February, departments submit their budget requests. So when we got those back, this, our shortfall increased to twenty point nine million. And that happens most years, because there's things like grant offsets that we have to put back into the budget, so that causes that gap to grow every year. What happened next, though, is we were planning to have our mid-March mayor's budget hearings, where counselors show up, department heads get to talk to the mayor, you know, discuss the impact of their budget. Then normally after that, or always after that, we have March through May, you know, we're developing budgetary solutions to solve that gap. And throughout that period, we're getting feedback from the House and Budget Bills on how the state budget is going to change from the governor's initial proposal that we used to create the budget. But this year, COVID-19 reached the US. We had public buildings close on three sixteen in Springfield, so we had to cancel the hearings, and the state budget was still nowhere in sight. As we put this together, we didn't have clear numbers. We did get information, I think just this past day, that we'll get level funding on state aid for at least the first two months of the year. But there's still clarity on what the entire year budget's gonna look like, and that's gonna rely on if more happens at the federal level. So, the effects of COVID-19 on the budget, we had to go back and reassess all our revenue assumptions in light of what was happening with the economy. So, we came up with a twenty-eight point three percent cut to unrestricted general government aid. That was based on the largest cut during the Great Recession. We figured there would probably be reductions of that magnitude, given how much the economy was affected. We also looked at all of our local receipts that were affected by the shutdown, and we cut those between ten and twenty-five percent, which added another four million dollars of revenue losses in our estimates. And then identified one point eight million dollars in things we had to add to the budget that were necessary services, which meant that our gap grew even larger. So we were then faced with a thirty-eight point one million dollar gap. That's about twice the size of the budget gaps we've had in recent years. So we knew we were gonna have to, you know, take deeper cuts than we had in previous years. Had this larger gap, the directive we had was to preserve all core services, fully fund our obligations, and avoid any layoffs, which we were able to do. The way we did that is there was nineteen million dollars in expenditure cuts. Part of that was debt service. We thought we might sell debt earlier on those schools, because interest rates were so low. But because of COVID-19, the markets basically froze up, and we were told it was not a good time to go out and sell that debt. That saved us money. We removed funding for cost-of-living adjustments, because given how much uncertainty there is, there just wasn't a way for us to fund that right now. School transportation, we were able to cut by a bit, because summer school is conducted virtually this year due to the pandemic. Seven vacant positions that were removed from the budget. So while there's no layoffs, there are vacant positions that we won't be hiring in this next year. And then there's four others that are only funded for half a year, so they can begin hiring in January. But that's another way we can save money. And then there were some programs, the summer pool program and Camp Star, that we had to cancel, because just due to health concerns, there was no way we could run them. We think we can, or we know we can run the splash pads, but the pool program had other health concerns. So there were savings there that were taken from the budget. Then we revisited our revenue assumptions again, as we got into June, and we had more information. We were able to decrease, the unrestricted general government aid was gonna come down. After talking to other communities, we decided fifteen percent was a safe bet. So that increased our revenue assumptions. Our local receipts started to do better as we kept on monitoring them throughout the shutdown, so we were able to increase another five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars on that end. And then we're using ten million dollars in one-time revenues. So that's the remaining two point nine million dollars we have in FY nineteen free cash. That's our surplus from last year. And then we have a placeholder number of seven point for the surplus for this year. That's a placeholder, because we're hoping that will be offset by more state and federal aid after a Phase Four stimulus is passed. It's really not something we'd like to use, because we think the next years will be pretty rough. If you think back to that graph I showed of the levy, it took us more than thirteen years to fully recover from the effects of that on the revenue side. So we're hoping we're not gonna have to use all this one-time revenue, and that there will be some sort of federal solution that helps the state come through with less severe cuts. What the budget does have, so it grew to seven hundred twenty-eight point six million dollars. That's a five point three percent growth rate. On the city side, once you remove the school department, we grew at a one point six percent rate. And actually, the budget shrunk by almost a percentage, once you remove the pension and health insurance appropriations. Those, the pension appropriation increased by nine percent with our schedule, and health insurance increased more than prior years, the last few, at four and a half percent. So this is really an austerity budget. It's preserving core services, it's avoiding layoffs, and it's planning for a worst-case scenario in terms of very large state aid cuts, and the fact that we need to be prepared for a protracted recovery, where this is gonna affect us in FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, kind of in line with what we saw from the last recession. And it does not use any of our reserves, so it's saving those reserves for when we get to those out-years, where we're still gonna need assistance closing larger budget gaps due to the recession. What drove growth in the budget was that big pension increase, almost four million dollars. Our contribution to the schools, that isn't covered by Chapter Seventy, so that's our required local contribution, and also school transportation, which isn't funded by Chapter Seventy. Then we had that health insurance increase, that was one point two million. The major new investments that came with this budget, one of the big ones is that we didn't need to pay for a recycling fee, tipping fee on recycling. And now, due to issues with tariffs, we are paying for that, but we're funding that without an increase in the trash fee. There's also eight hundred thousand dollars for a shooting range for the police department that will allow them to get their training. They're not gonna be able to use their current location, so this kind of gives us a new state-of-the-art training facility for them to use that. There's an investment in the police department budget for new positions associated with the body worn camera program, and fees for cloud storage. And then there's, while we cut debt service, there's new debt service that was layered onto our schedule, and that's for the portion of the NSBA projects, the school projects that we've already done. We've also purchased some police vehicles, and there's the bond for the body worn camera equipment. The fire department, we also invested in new gear, so there's a new apparatus that was approved by the city council as a lease, and then we also are putting more funding for turnout gear for the first responders. There's a new server for the entire city IT network, which is now proving more important than ever. And we also have, we just wanted to note that we're still, we're fully funding all departments. So in the middle of a pandemic, obviously, fully funding the health department. Libraries is one of the places other communities have looked to for, you know, reducing hours, but as of right now, we're fully funded. So, if ours are, we don't have full access right now, but that's due to health concerns, so there's funding for the libraries to open as soon as health concerns allow us to completely open them. There's a sidewalk crew that we added to do sidewalks throughout the city, and a parks downtown maintenance crew that were added two years ago, we're keeping those fully funded, so those investments will continue. And no core services or programs have been cut, except for, you know, the ones we talked about, where there were safety concerns due to COVID-19. Those, we had to cancel for this summer, and the budget has no layoffs to balance the budget. And then again, just importantly, no reserves, so it saves the rainy day funds for the difficult years ahead. It's also a good sign to the ratings agencies as we go out to sell debt for those four schools, that we're, you know, making the choices we have to, to balance with that reserves. Yeah, and that's the end of the presentation, so we can move on to questions.
TJ, did you wanna say anything? Are you all set, TJ?
I think we're all set. We can go right into questions, or go right into presentations, however you guys wanna proceed.
Okay, so if there are any questions on the overall budget at this point in time, then you can raise your hand, otherwise we'll move into the rest of the presentations. Seeing none, we'll move right into the mayor's budget. TJ, I mean, not TJ, Tom.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry, Tom, before you, before you do that, Counselor Allen, you have a question, sir?
There we go. Now I'm unmuted. Just in general, TJ, given what Tim just presented to us and stuff, is this a lot better than you were thinking six or eight weeks ago?
No, it's a, it's a pretty austere budget, and we still have some areas, that seven point one million dollar, we know that's the savings from having not paying contracts or services not rendered. That's the net effect of the lost revenue, plus the savings of roughly eighteen million or so from the hiring freeze and spending freeze. So that seven million is real. I don't necessarily want to use it if we don't have, if we don't have to. I'd like to still push the state and federal government to come through and do one of two things. One is allow us to use the remaining revenue that we have for COVID, back for lost revenue with counter appropriation. Or two, have a second appropriation of federal government through the state or directly to us, hopefully, that will allow us to back the lost revenue. So now the federal money allows us to do anything related to lost revenue. That's why we struggle with it.
So what, so what do you see as the biggest risk? As we sit here, if we approve this thing in some form?
It's just, yeah, the biggest risk would be trying to buy us the time we need to figure this all out before we set the tax rate, no matter.
But in terms of the viability of the budget and, and the revenue assumptions you put in and stuff?
It's our best thinking. We are the head of the state. Today, the state released state aid payments, or a budget that it has a one-twelve budget, and they are sent through level funding, Chapter Seventy, and level funding unrestricted general government aid for the next two months. We assumed a fifteen percent reduction, so that's kind of good news to us that they stay on that path. But we, nobody knows what they're gonna actually do. The issue we have is if, if we get to the point where they decide to reduce the number for the budget for September, if we have to make budget cuts, they gotta be more budget cuts to make up for the lost time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davila.
I think it was the president. I think TJ, you might have just answered my question. I was just gonna ask, if we're gonna be level funded for the next two months, and it then changes, then what happens after that, particularly to the core services? But I think you might have just answered my question.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a weak C approach to this budget, that's what makes me a little uncomfortable, in the sense that we have no idea what the state's thinking. We have a lot of great conversations with our chairman, Richard Neal's office, about doing a fourth stimulus. We're having great conversations with the Anna and the state about kind of how we're gonna get through it. I think it was just for us, it was kind of time to, you know, make the decision, make these assumptions, be crystal clear about what these assumptions mean, in terms of what they mean for the budget, and make it so we're all on the same page. Because I don't want any surprises come September, November, between September and November, I'll set the tax rate, and I want to know kind of where, where our heads at when we will be developing this.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Letterman?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to Tim for the presentation. Just a couple of questions, and they don't have to be answered right now, but if you could send a list of the vacant positions that aren't being filled, to find those cost savings, and also the ones that are only funded at half a year. And then, the other thing I was wondering is that, you know, I've been going through line item budget, and then the budget summary that you've sent, but do we have, and I sort of ask about this every year, but what do we have that goes deeper? I mean, for example, if I look at a line item, and the line item that you said, it'll be for the whole department, it'll be salaries and wages, and if the whole department is six hundred grand, I mean, how do I see it broken down, and what's allocated, and same with, you know, other line items?
Did we run that report for the council that shows a little bit more detail of the online items?
We have the line item budget that you sent, that we sent out, which you asked for last year, counselor, where you were looking for more detail than that?
Yeah, because that still has very broad line items that are worth hundreds, thousands, and millions of dollars. So, I mean, I can send some examples afterwards, but I'm just wondering, I mean, what, what do you guys have? Like, I imagine it's in an Excel sheet, and I should be able to break it down even further. I mean, this information must exist in departments.
We have the, we have the budget built up by line item, which is the second spreadsheet we sent after your request to TJ. That's as, that's as detailed as we get. That's how the budget in unison is built.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Tom, my apologies for last year, but please, the floor is yours for this year to present on the mayor's budget.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The mayor is actually attending a community event at the Girls Club Family Center on Acorn Street, putting sends his regards. And it's thanks to the city council and to the staff who work very hard on putting this document together. And so thank you to, on his behalf, to everybody. As you look at, that our budget in the mayor's office has changed very little from last year to this. In fact, it was slightly reduced, a point six percent reduction. All of, almost all of the budget is taken up in salaries, is very little in other line items. The one line items that we do have are related to office supplies, and small numbers of travel and others that mainly is being utilized by our chief diversity officer to attend seminars and so forth. So, other than that, there's very little change from last year's to this in the mayor's budget, but I'm glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions from the council regarding the mayor's budget? Seeing none, we will move to Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, just a quick question. Tom, there's a, last year, I asked about the line item in the mayor's budget regarding professional development. What is it, what is it this year compared to last year?
I believe it's the same. It's under seminars, education, training. Last year was thirty-four, twenty-four. This year, it is thirty-four, twenty-four.
How much of that was used last year?
I will defer to Finance Department, and they will give you that report for you. Counselor. I can tell you that, uh, I personally, Tilly and she has been regularly attending many seminars and events outside of City Hall, and recruiting, and so on. So, whatever has been utilized in that line item, has been utilized by her.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. So TJ, you're gonna get that information to Counselor Ramos, I would imagine. Counselor Davila?
It gave me surprise, I think. I'd be brief with my question. TJ, my compliments on the, on the analysis that was given to us. I found this document to be extremely fascinating, I found it fascinating. At any rate, just a quick question. I see that we are using some money from, we're using some money from the free cash account, and I believe I read here somewhere that we also using some pay-as-you-go account. Can you give me a quick description of what that is?
Yeah, so to balance, how balance the budget, we stopped all the projects that we had for pay-as-you-go capital, and we're asking the city council to carry it forward into next year, FY twenty-one, to reduce the amount we have to appropriate into that fund for minor maintenance and minor, minor capital improvements that we have that fund. So, at the council meeting tonight, the council will be asked to move that money to make it available for FY twenty-one as kind of a budget balancing.
That will be the free cash, right?
Free cash will be moving to deal with, free cash, we're gonna sit on and use FY nineteen remaining free cash to balance FY twenty-one, FY twenty-one sports.
Yeah, but the pay-as-you-go, that's the part that I'm gonna get.
Yeah, so the pay-as-you-go is a completely separate funding source, or a separate account that funds, you know, minor stuff, projects you don't really wanna issue debt for, that may be twenty-five thousand or a hundred thousand. That makes sense to do a couple quick projects, while I have to go sell debt for everything. So, we stopped spending it, so we can have it for FY twenty-one, to make sure that we're in compliance with the ordinance.
And that's, and that's one that the mayor puts aside every year?
Yes, that's the one we appropriate, one and a half percent of local source revenue, and that into a capital.
Thank you.
Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to piggyback off of something that was said last year by TJ. I just wanted to make sure that we have an understanding. When Counselor Ramos wanted to decrease the personal service line item last year, you said that we could not decrease the line item, we could just cut from the department, and then you guys choose where the decrease was coming from? Was that a clear understanding? Was that a clear understanding?
Yeah, that is correct. So, uh, the council can cut out the personal services, OTPS, capital level. Um, but as the department heads, they get to implement the cuts. So basically, the short way is if you're targeting, you cannot target position specific. You can target the department's overall budget and then the department head and the mayor make the determination on how to apply that, any reductions.
Okay, because I called the DOR last year when you said that. And I spoke to Ken from the Department of Local Services. And he said that the city council have the authority to decrease the line item. And he said that that's in section MGL 44, section 32. And the last change for that happened in 1995. So I'm not sure if, um, there's a disconnect or if I'm not understanding what you're telling me. But, um, I did call and, and he said we, the city council does have the, um, authority to decrease the line item.
So TJ, can we get you to follow up on that, uh, for either you or the solicitor, uh, in advance till tomorrow's meeting? Un- unless you have the answer now?
And I can repeat that section is MGL 44, section 32. Last change happened in 1995. And, um, I spoke to Ken from the Department of Local Services at the DOR level.
And, and in fact, e- unless you have the clear answer now, let's.
Uh, let's keep going and I'll get, we'll get an answer tomorrow.
Thank you and thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are there any further questions regarding the mayor's budget? Seeing none, we will move on to the city council's budget. Uh, or I'm sorry, yes, the city council and the city clerks.
Hi, counselors, um, Attorney Davis. So with the city council budget, the largest decrease was actually rental office equipment. And that's mostly because the, the aides in the office actually found a contract for the printer that was less than what we were paying. Um, so that worked out well. And also, of course, the COLA adjustment, which is citywide. Other than that, there was a line item added for, added for training and professional development. Um, for 10,000 and salaries remain the same, which is the, of course, the largest part of their budget, of that budget. Did you guys have any questions specifically on the city council budget before I move the city clerks?
Are there any questions from the council? You said training and professional development, $10,000 that was added? Did I miss that?
That's what I see here on my spreadsheet.
Interesting. Um, are there any other, Counselor Ramos?
Yeah, I have the same reaction, Mr. President. I, um, I, I, I wanna commend our clerk, uh, for advocating for, um, uh, for, for professional development. I mean, this is something that we have fought for, for a long time. And I'm glad to see that it's in, that it's in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you. Is this training and professional development for the staff or for the counselors and staff?
So let me clarify that, that we did not add training money to the city council budget. Sorry for trying to get clarity. Uh, clerk Davis requested it as part of the budget request, uh, and we did not add it back. And we actually reduced travel and seminars and education across the city, uh, as a way to stop bouncing the budget. Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, that's my fault. I'm sorry. That we're talking about here?
Um, either Attorney Davis or TJ.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, counselor?
I'm sorry, what's the 10,000 that we're talking about here?
For professional development. And that's my mistake. We must've requested it, but it didn't make it into our budget. It's on my spreadsheet, so I'm not sure why or what I'm misunderstanding. Um, but apparently it wasn't added to the budget.
Well, we, we appreciate your efforts for.
Thank you.
At least requesting it. Counselor Ramos followed by Counselor Fenton.
I, I guess I, I take it back, Mr. President. We have advocated for this for a long, and, and it's, it's a small dollar amount. And I'm really disappointed that we can't get a small dollar amount request. Disappointing, uh, very, very, very disappointing.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Fenton.
No, I just, I wasn't seeing it in the, uh, in the budget document we got. That was my.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions regarding the city council budget? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's budget.
With the city clerk's budget, the largest reduction that I see is for one of our vital clerk positions. We had one woman that retired, so that has been reduced from our budget. Um, and that's the largest decrease that we have. As far as our revenue, um, one line item, it was a variance of $42,000. So I'm not certain what that encompasses. I'm not sure what department fines and fees that includes, but I know we did have a decrease in the amount. It went from, we thought we would have 852,000 and we actually only made 810,000. And I'm sure that's attributed to the shutdown of city hall. Hopefully, we're making that up, some of it, uh, with our appointment schedule now.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Uh, Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I'm Adam Clark. Um, I just had a couple of questions on a, a few of the, um, proposed increases. So under salaries and wages, you said we lost somebody, but it looked like we're going from, we have a $25,000 dollar increase under salaries and wages. So did we add a position or, um, or is it just from, you know, cost of living increases?
I'm looking to add a position. Um, we have one actually posted right now for an assistant for our public records coordinator.
Alright, and, um, same on just the printing and binding. It looks like it doubled. Do we know what that, that increases?
That's part of our Carisoff bill and also it's due to, we have a, we received a scanning grant uh, to update some of the things in the office. So that's attributed to that grant.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Whitfield.
Um, I'm just confused as to what, uh, the department heads are looking at compared to what we're looking at. Um, cause I know, um, Attorney Davis has mentioned the spreadsheet. And I think if we would've had some type of spreadsheet, we could see what the real decreases are. Um, and I know that this isn't the actual real budget document, but what are you looking at that you see these differences and we don't? Also, last year I asked for revenue, a revi- revenue document, and I don't see that in here either.
So what I'm looking at was received, I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Attorney Davis.
What I'm looking at was received from my budget analyst directly.
Okay, thank you. That was more question for TJ or Lindsay. And, no, no, don't be sorry. It's not, I'm not, I didn't say who I was directing it to.
Is adding a position for, uh, public records, uh, which desperately needed to keep up with the volume of public records or class. And then it's half, one of those half funded positions, uh, to backfill the vital clerk in January.
I, I think Counselor Whitfield's question is to the discrepancy in the document that counsel, that Attorney Davis might be looking at it versus what it is that we have.
So the document that, that went to the analysts is what the backup is that goes into munis where all the analysis, all the work is done, uh, gone on to, uh, determine what, what appropriate appropriation levels, uh, have occurred. Uh, so that's what gets sent out, you know, it's got the roster of the positions all added up that make, you know, the, for, uh, personal services member. It's got the OTPS backup that says, you know, they wanted subscriptions to Mass Live or subscriptions to.
And I know I'm familiar with the document, but I don't know if the rest of the council is familiar with the document. But I would also like to see, uh, where we at, where we're at as far as revenue and the revenue assumptions. And I know I did ask for this last year. Um, it's kind of hard to, um, understand what they're saying when they start talking about revenue if we don't have any type of revenue document in front of us.
Can we get access to that, TJ? Uh, in advance of tomorrow, if possible.
Uh, revenue assumptions, uh, in detail that adds up to what it is and where, where our assumptions are. Um, unfortunately, our processes, I know you're, uh, looking for Counselor Whitfield. I just can't do that, uh, without knowing what we're gonna do to set the tax rate in November. And I know it's uncomfortable for people that are into, uh, finance and budgets and understands that, you know, you're, you're doing an expense budget now and a revenue budget later. And, uh, but we can show you all the numbers and how they add up and, uh, just tell you where they're, um, need, need a little more refinement or need a little bit more time. And, um, I think that would be helpful.
Is there something that you could run just to tell me, uh, what the assumptions were, um, for FY20? And then where we're at right now?
Yeah, Lindsay, we could work on something.
Yeah, so what we.
Thank you.
I think we did this for you last year, counselor, is we can run the departmental revenue. And that's what, that's what, um, clerk, uh, Davis was talking about, the departmental revenue, um, specifically for the clerk's office. And generally, we don't, uh, when we talk about the budget, we don't review the departmental revenue, but we can certainly send you the spreadsheet or at least what we sent you last year for the.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you, Lindsay.
Can you make sure to send that to everybody, uh, Lindsay?
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
If there are no further questions for Attorney Davis, we will move on to the board of elections. Commissioner Gladys Oyola.
Um, our budget for FY21, um, will see a decrease of about 30 from what we requested. Uh, if you're looking at the numbers that we have, they're pretty spread out throughout our budget. Um, we've had decreases in office supplies, other supplies. Our main decrease though is in printing and binding. And that is due to the fact that this coming election cycle is a state election cycle. So we don't do, uh, printing and binding, the printing of our own ballots for this, um, term, the state expenses. And we've taken into account temporary, uh, employees that we need to hire for early voting. So you'll see that, um, our line item for temporary salaries and wages is 187,000 approximately. And that is accounting for our poll workers, which we will still be using this year because it's going to be a hybrid method, which is the vote by mail, the regular polling election, and then early voting as well. Uh, that's the summary of salaries. We still have one vacancy to fill, um, hopefully soon for the election assistant position and three staff as well as myself.
Thank you, uh, Gladys, um, Counselor Ramos.
Mr. How much of the, um, early voting expenses, uh, will be reimbursed from the state? And have we factored that into our budget?
We have not because that's still, when this budget was created, that's something that was still up for debate in the House. And just as of late, the Senate has, uh, passed another version. Uh, the leadership is going to finalize, hopefully a version soon. We're looking at, uh, July 17th as kind of our drop rate for all the cities and towns across the state. Figure out, um, what the legislature will approve, including how much reimbursement we'll receive and what types of reimbursement. Because, uh, if we have to do a, a heavy vote by mail, um, effort, uh, that's going to increase our cost for postage. Um, and definitely more, uh, that is going to get the, uh, ballots out to the voters.
We have, uh, an idea just based on, on the, um, past years, uh, how, what percentage the state actually reimburses relate relative to, um, early voting?
Uh, relative, I'm gonna just be honest and say the state is extremely stingy when it comes to reimbursing us for early voting. Uh, they set parameters that any early voting that they will reimburse for is things that are housed in the main voting place, which is city hall. So they consider city hall to be the main, uh, early voting location. Anything that happens above and beyond city hall is something that we are doing as a city, uh, to make it easier for voters to cast a ballot. But they will not reimburse for that. So they wanna reimburse for staffing that it takes. They won't reimburse us for anything above and beyond the regular business hours, uh, that we do here at city hall either. They do not reimburse us typically for Saturday hours. And, um, the actual voting by mail, so if anyone votes early by mail, they will not reimburse us for postage costs for that as well.
But the early voting is quote unquote a mandate, right? From the state, so it's an unfun- unfunded mandate?
It, it is. So what they do is kind of limit what they fund. And anything that we choose to do above and beyond, um, we kind of take that on as our own cost. Uh, so it's gonna be extremely difficult for us to do, uh, early voting like we did in the past. The first year that we did it, we did it in, you know, five different locations, uh, twice at each location, including city hall. And we've kind of whittled that down as we've, uh, seen the need, uh, decrease. And the popularity in certain locations is definitely less than others. For example, the 16 acres area over at, uh, the Green League Community Center is one of our most popular locations. So if we have to fund something out of the city budget, I always tend to go to that location and also the Ray Gordon Senior Center. But, um, again, it's very prohibitive. They set parameters and if we fall outside of that, they will not fund it.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. President. That's, that's certainly a problem, uh, that, that we should discuss as a council, what we can do to, uh, encourage, uh, the state to help the city, I mean, and other municipalities fund, uh, this unfunded mandate. But thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Commissioner Oyola, Commissioner Oyola. Uh, you said you have one, um, election assistant position open, is that full time?
Yes.
Is that, is?
Sorry, go ahead. It's a vacancy that we're backfilling.
Okay.
Yes.
So, but that's, is that, is that position frozen now because of the, uh, of the freeze that we have in the city?
It was as of March, um, and I, as of last week, we put in a request to see if we can have it reposted. Uh, just the expectation of the amount of work that we're going to have within the next month or two. Uh, I think really dictates that we should have a person trained and ready to kind of hit ground running in, uh, August, beginning of August.
So you're pretty confident that you're gonna get an extra body?
Uh, yeah, it's already, the funding is there, so it's already been funded.
Okay, good. Now, uh, just to think about what Counselor Ramos was saying, uh, did you say that we don't get paid for the postage? If somebody returns the ballot back?
Correct.
Vote by mail? But, so.
Now, the voters have to pay for their own postage, sending it back. But if someone requests a ballot be sent to them, the cost of the postage, and you'll see, that's why my, uh,
Okay.
postage and delivery line item is pretty big for a small department. Uh, that's because we have to mail the ballots out at the cost to the city.
But correct me if I'm mistaken, I thought that we're gonna send a ballot to everybody?
No, that, that wasn't part of what was agreed on in the Senate. Uh, so what they agreed on was sending applications out, not ballots.
Thank you.
So the cost of application is, is it, so it's a quick.
Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
So the cost of that application being sent out, so we're including the budget, that's gonna be covered?
Not to the extent that we expect the, um, the applications to go out. And that's something, kind of one of the finer details of the Senate budget, where, uh, they were asking, the Senate and the House were asking that the Secretary of State's office include that in their budget as opposed to bury the cities and towns bearing the cost of mailing out the applications.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good day, everyone, uh, good afternoon. Um, Commissioner Oyola, I know last year there was an order passed about voter notification that, uh, it's nowhere in your budget. Was that something that was not funded or, uh, came into your budget?
Yeah, the, I think you're speaking on the, the order that was introduced by Counselor Letterman. And that was not funded. Um, it was passed, uh, by the council, but it, uh, received no funding.
Received no funding. Alright, and then, um, I know that, uh, last week, the vote by mail was, uh, it, it caught a lot of support, but it didn't have, I guess what, Counselor Davila, just to reiterate, that it, it didn't have the postage to mail it in. So they'll, they'll mail you the, the, the application, but if you want it, if you want the application, you have to pay for the postage yourself. Yes?
Uh, just to kind of reiterate what you said, the, the, the application being mailed to you has to be at the cost of whatever the city or town is. And then you, as the voter, would have to pay for the postage to come back to the city or town.
Okay, so how, how much is that gonna cost us to mail out an application to everyone? Because the application is supposed to go out to everyone. So how much is that gonna cost you guys?
It would be 100,000, 100,000 voters times whatever it costs. It would be a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand voters times whatever it costs us to mail it out.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. So, and, and the state left that on the behest of the towns to, and we're not getting no, are we getting the money back for that? Or can we apply to get that money back? Or we just have to pay for it?
Right now, as it stands, it looks like the cities and towns have to pay for it. And like I said, until it's finalized, until the, the leadership agrees on one version that goes to a vote, we won't know. So I think.
I just, the reason, I'm just being, I just wanted to be clear on, so what I am understanding is that the, the leadership left the burden of a situation with the pandemic on the cities and towns to pay, to, even though we, you know, because a lot of us, we passed the resolution on, you know, wanting the actual ballot sent to us or sent to the residents. So we have to pay, we have to figure it out then, right? We have to figure out that part. So it, was that an expense that you foreseen? Or what, how, how did that money get moved around? You, you, you understand the question I'm trying to ask? It's like, you didn't, we, we weren't, when you did the budget before and with the money that was coming in from last year till now, we didn't think, we didn't know a pandemic was coming. So essentially, right now, I know that in the CARES Act, there was allegedly some money for elections. So then the state delegation, or let me not say the whole delegation, but it was overwhelmingly voted on, decided to leave the burden on to the residents of Springfield on something that they negotiated. Wow. So on top of your budget, we had to find another hundred thousand dollars somewhere to, to balance this budget to make sure that they can get the applications. But then versus these residents, they have to understand that once they get in the, is there a way that you can send us on what that application, what that letter looks like? Because remember, we had that discussion, ladies and gentlemen, and this is not a question for you, Commissioner Oyola, that it was when it came to the tickets or to the trash fees, how they were in the different colored envelopes that we were talking about before, when it came to that, some people mistakenly mistaken this envelope for something. Because the thing is, I don't want this thing that's coming from the Commissioner's office to look like it's a bill and people not to realize that it's actually their application to go vote. And that's it. I just wanted to get a little bit more information, Commissioner Oyola. Now that I know that the voter notification was not funded, which is, that really bothers. But at the same time, I just thought that we could like triple dip, you know? You know, we're talking about the census, we're talking about the voter notification, and then the ballot, you know, all in August would have been such a, an amazing thing to, you know, try to, you know, instead of killing two birds with three birds with one stone. But thank you for the information, Counselor, I mean, Counselor Oyola, Commissioner Oyola, appreciate it.
So Commissioner, as soon as it's finalized, can you give us, can you get the entire council that information in terms of what was voted on and what was not? And then we can maybe ask some follow up questions offline. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I might say I might hand up on the voter election or municipal election notification ordinance as well, which folks will remember is a law that was passed by the city council in an effort to make sure that, that all voters in the city were aware of when municipal elections were and which offices were on the ballot, which, you know, it's a right voter in the city of Springfield. But to Counselor Gomez's point, of course, it, it wouldn't be in, in this fiscal year's budget because we won't have a municipal election this fiscal year. But I did raise my hand because I want the Finance Department and the Elections Commission to begin thinking about the fact that there will be a municipal election in the next year. And I am very hopeful and confident that a priority will be made to ensure that this law that was passed by the city council will be implemented. And certainly also, I would hope that you work together with the Grants Department, too, or the Grants Director, to look at, you know, what other funding sources might be available. I think when we ran the whole thing, it was around thirteen thousand dollars to send it out for elections. So we have a primary, and the general will be twenty six. But I think it's well worth informing our city that their local government is holding an election. So I do hope that next we'll be considering.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. And I'll just remind counselors that we have, at this time, twenty minutes remaining. And then we will be logging off and logging on to public speak outs. So we certainly have a long ways to go, which means that tomorrow will be even longer. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just Counselor Letterman kind of answered my question. But so if we figure out that it's going to cost for the voter notification roughly, how much did you say, thirteen thousand? How much, how much you think it would have cost you for next year? Or even this year? Going forward, how much do you think that should be allocated?
In terms of?
Of the voter notification ordinance?
Well, see, there's, there's two parts to it. So the part of the signage is one portion of it, and then the other portion is the mailing. So depending on the cost of the postage, if we send it out in bulk mail and the cost to print it out, to print out the notification, that's where the number that, you know, I had given Counselor Letterman was from last year. So if there's any increase in postage, we'd have to account for that.
And that was thirteen thousand?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown?
Yes. Hey, Gladys, how are you?
Hello.
Thank you. Basically, it's pretty much, you're pretty much using historical data from every year. There's never really a tick in, I know how, I know how the actual mailing system work. I'm very familiar with it. A lot of times, it seems like, why would there be a tick? I don't really think, usually voters historically do what they always do. Do you look for a flux in actual people with that application? Because usually, you know, it's not, it's really not that, they don't usually use it. It's not really a high percentage of voters that actually do it.
The, what we go by is the type of election that we have, right? So basically, during the city election year, we'll see kind of a downturn and request absentee ballots. Right now, because it's a federal election year, it's always our highest vote by mail time. Actually, our overseas ballots, because we have a lot of U.S. citizens that are residing outside of the country. And with the pandemic that we're kind of living in now, we've seen a very big uptick in people requesting ballots in preparation for what they believe to be kind of a second round of possible illness in November. And we've, you know, a lot of our seniors at our different assisted living facilities that have worked with their residential advisors to kind of do a group request for ballots. So we've seen, like, Olive Reed's Landing has kind of sent in all of their applications in anticipation that they are not going to go to their polling place to vote for November.
Wow, that's, that's great. That's good news. All right. Thank, thank you, Gladys. That's great.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. If there are no further questions for the Election Commissioner, we will move on to TJ and Finance.
Goodness, President. So the OMB budget actually is down. An FTE, we eliminated senior vacancy analyst, or senior analyst vacancy. A lot of OBS, by example, so that we're, we're willing to cut positions as well as we try to tighten our balance. And then the other, OBS is just historical spending over the past few years. So there's nothing major in the budget, but we did eliminate a vacancy.
Thank you. TJ, are there any questions from the council? Seeing Counsel, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, I just had one quick question for you. What led, excuse me, what led to the, the elimination of the vacant senior analyst position?
Tim was promoted to Budget Director, so his senior analyst position was vacant, so he kept it vacant.
Are there any plans to include that in a future budget, or is that just kind of eliminated from here on out?
I guess it's an entire recession that we are heading into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just on that, in the line item budget that you guys sent out, there's OMB, and then there was a separate, just one line item that said Finance. It was about two million in professional services. What is that line item?
So that's the account we have set aside to pay for the SRA or for the union station money that we have or that we pay to them to help support their operations. And there's also the service level agreements we have with the school department. Lindsay, what else have we got in there? City Hall?
The management is something Hall.
Yes.
So you just have that categorized under Finance, but it's a number of contracts.
Yes.
Okay. So that is exactly what I'm talking about. That is my issue with the line item budget that we have currently, although it's great information. It's like, I want to know what those contracts are, and I feel like we should be able to see that. I'm happy to just ask, but I feel like it might be simpler if we could just see it all at once. So if we can figure that out, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If there are no further questions for Finance, we will move on to three one one.
Good afternoon. Hopefully, everyone can hear me.
We can.
Okay. I do apologize. I just had surgery, and so I'm still recovering. So I do apologize if everyone's not able to, to hear me, but I can't speak louder than what I'm speaking right now. The three one one department, we had a small decrease in our budget. That basically were from office supplies and advertisement. That will be our only really cuts in our current budget for fiscal year twenty one. Right now, our main budget items will be for our salaries and our software contracts. Those are two of the main things that we do have. And then one slight cut that we do have, say, indicate it will be for advertising and office supplies.
Are there any questions or comments from the council, three one one? Seeing.
Hello, Mr. President.
Counselor Letterman, I see your hand. Counselor Davila, I do not see your hand raised. But Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila.
I just wanted to say thank you to the department head for being here, and we appreciate you coming in right after surgery. Heal well and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, Coach, I have my sentiments of, of speedy recovery. Just a quick question, the advertising, what is, what is the usual budget that you have for that? It's usually run around, let me just look at here, it's about about six hundred dollars roughly for advertising. Did you say six hundred? Yeah, about six hundred dollars or so. When you say advertising, are you saying to let people know about the three one one service? That is, that is correct. So what we do, we do have items that we do send out. We have like little pamphlets and stuff that we do send out. When people, new people come in, if they're getting new trash service and stuff, we have these little magnets and all that stuff that we do send out, let them know what three one one is all about. In the previous years, I think it was two years ago, the prior director, she had flags made up, placed, posted up in the downtown area, and that was like one of the largest places for advertising. But other than that, our main advertising is precise, what's on our website, is that we do send out these little magnets out to the, excuse me, out, out to the customers. Yeah. Thank you. I was just going to mention that I, I think that maybe we can go to the drawing board on this later because I'm shocked, there's only six hundred dollars for a population of one hundred fifty three thousand in the city. As I mentioned before, by the way, you guys do a fantastic job at three one one, I've seen the facility, location a couple of times. You guys do great work. But I do find that a lot of people in the city still don't know about three one one. And my observation has been that they usually translate into later being left out, they don't know you can call for pickup. And it's something that I look forward to, to explore more in the future because it's, it will seem to me that the line item should be a robust item, a line item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend the three one one department for having to deal with some interesting occurrences in FY twenty one, or twenty, which is, of course, the snow occurrences we had back in December. I know that, you know, you had to maintain services, your core support services for throughout that time. I know you were getting an influx of calls. So I definitely just want to commend your department for handling that and then providing the data on the backend, which helped inform my subcommittee, maintenance and development, to address the issue. So thank you.
No problem. Yeah, this to all the councilmen, if you have any issues with the three one one department, if you have any, if you want information, feel free to contact me directly. I'll try to get you that information as soon as I can, directly.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from the council, we will move to capital asset construction.
Evening, councilors. Capital asset construction, we're returning to large scale construction throughout the city. We have five FTEs. We've cut our budget in personal services that will affect any seed money it takes to get projects started.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Garvey. Mr. Mahoney, Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Evening, councilors. We have nine FTEs, eight are full time, two are part time. The, we handle all of the, you know, the city. Oh, we use our advertising through a new NeoGov system. So we've actually cut our advertising account to five hundred and a half to zero because we're just using the NeoGov system. That's how we do all of our postings for our jobs. We had two hundred and five thousand on that system this year for one hundred forty six positions, which yielded us to five thousand four hundred applicants. So it's, it seems to be working pretty well. The cuts that we're having are in the professional services. And, you know, we're going to manage that after the budget stop.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to Employee Benefits Department.
Hello, councilors. Heather Petito, Employee Benefits. The FY twenty one departmental budget funds six FTEs. We're fully staffed currently. And we currently just have a couple smaller contracts for our copy release and for our shred bin, which is a secured bin to protect private information. It also accounts for a weekly mailing of paperwork to the GIC and other general mail to the employees, retirees, and vendors. The departmental budget for benefits, that's the health, dental, vision, and life insurance lines, includes the city share of all those items, plus a Medicare penalty and the Springfield redevelopment authority GIC payment. And as Tim has already alluded in his opening presentation, there was an increase to the health insurance rates, about four and a half percent. And that's included in that line item and justifies that increase. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to Office of Procurement. Thank you. Is there anyone here from Office of Procurement?
Yes, I see Theo, and I thought I saw Lauren up there.
Lauren, you're on mute.
Okay, sorry for that. Oh, boy. Okay, currently, the Office of Procurement has seven full time employees, which is consistent with FY twenty. Current cuts this year were made to our seminars, training, and in-state travel. The biggest hit we took was advertising, since that's our biggest expenditure. In case, you know, if we have to restore it, because it is something that's mandated by the state. But looking at last year, we seem to be coming close to what we're asked, what we cut to this year. So hopefully, we should be okay for FY twenty one.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to IT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hearst. You know, we say this every year. Much of the increase that we're experiencing this year was due to contractual obligations. The industry average in IT is about five percent year over year. So the limited increase that you see here, minus the cuts that we have performed, were all based upon contractual obligation, software. Hardware usually remains static, but most of it is software.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none.
I just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my hand up, sorry.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question with the, guys, thank you so much, the IT Department, because you guys are definitely the heroes of the hour with this pandemic. And so just a quick question, so we have an increase of eighty five thousand, six forty three. Can we, I guess what I'm saying is this, just kind of a request. Can we look at, to see how we can help our friends over at TJO get in Wi-Fi into the building? You know, I know they don't have it. They need it, it's critical. And it's a overcharge for you guys, too, to see if that can be done this year.
So I just, we had, we have just finished, we worked with Finance, and we just finished installing fiber into the building.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Analyzing the wireless infrastructure will be our next approach.
Okay, and do you have, also, do we have a timetable for that?
I don't at this time. We're just, we just got finished now, and we're doing their phones as we speak. And then the next will be to do Wi-Fi based upon that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. If there are no further questions, and we will move on to the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. So that, we're really essentially a level funded, twelve positions in FY twenty and twelve positions in FY twenty one, or other than personal services, is contractual work associated with developing valuations for the annual tax rate process and also defending valuations when we get to the appellate tax board level. So it's FY twenty one proposed is consistent with FY twenty.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Is there, what is the breakdown between home office positions or, I know there are always people and assessors who traveled and viewed properties and that sort of thing. Does that still go on? And what is the breakdown?
So we're operating with two teams in the office, and essentially, we've got two people in the field full time. And we never have more than than two assessors at the office, two out of the three assessors. So, you know, we're providing for coverage through the appointment only system with a staff person and with an assessor always available at City Hall. So we have a couple people working at home and on a five day a week basis, and then the teams alternate, working at home and working at City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none. So looks like we've reached our time. Is there anyone who is scheduled for today who absolutely cannot make tomorrow? And I apologize for those who are scheduled for tomorrow. I asked to come on today. I was a bit more optimistic. But if there is no one that has raised their hand, that absolutely cannot come tomorrow, then we will conclude this committee of the whole, and we will start tomorrow with you, Pat, and the Controller's Office. To the rest of my colleagues that are on the phone, I've sent you all text messages as to the public speak out. We have two individuals signed on for public speak outs. So if you could log out of this link, log on to the link that I sent to your phones, and then you will be logging back on to this link that you have now for us to begin our city council meeting. Brendan, if you are listening, can you just confirm that that is indeed accurate?
Yes, Counselor, that is what our plan is.
Okay, so we might, might take a few minutes in transition. We will plan to start our public speak out right at six twenty. To the department heads, thank you to those who we didn't get to. I apologize sincerely, and we'll get to you tomorrow. Thank you.